Bill Larson, ExerFission.
Okay, we do have a bond, um, I think these are all members, right? Yeah. Okay, well, uh, we do the meeting minutes for last meeting.
So if you move along or something, then, you know, you don't feel like you're bound for jail.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They've gone to maintenance the seminars for.
It's W B, Harvey, is that? For the resort.
It's, it's, um.
Enterprises or something?
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, Mary, wouldn't we, um, we did, we're doing this for a while there, but it's kind of fell by the wayside. Like on line sixty-one, where, I liked the way you do that, where you were, um, the motion is made in second and then it goes to the public hearing. Public hearing is closed and then you list the vote the way it is, but could you just vote in bold letters above that so that it stands out a bit more so when you're reviewing, uh, minutes, it's a little bit easier to find the votes? And I think you had it in one of two places.
Yes, I did.
Kind of make that a standard procedure.
Four years ago, it's getting dark, thunderstorm came in, got absolutely dark, trying to get out of phone. My wife and I went to Little Tangerine and pumpkin thing up in the road, but it was pretty cool. It was a little golden rainy, but not bad. It was. It'll rise and it's fine. I think I read, I just read on the internet, some woman got dead, like, got a little pumpkin much critically injured.
Um, line one seventy-two, it's just a typo, I, the mountain got, I think, oh, is that an A or an O? My, my eyes, it is an A, okay, then it's fine.
We were all, hopefully, the home was open. Some specific lines, and I think that's good. No, they'd like to find a way to increase the density in the C one zone, which is fine with me.
That's big in town, you know?
Yeah.
There are places in town, you know?
I'm like, had to get it, put it as close together as you can get people to buy them.
Well, that's why I think it's particularly strong, if them and its small off, and then.
Yeah. The whole front porch and sidewalks, you know, pocket parks, uh, it builds community.
Yeah, it changes, it changes the nature of the environment.
And it did that, I keep putting a moving name aside, and if you got a five acre minimum, or even a one acre minimum, everybody's got their kind of everywhere, and nobody knows anybody.
Oh, yeah. Character. Mary, start.
How'd you end up in Franklin, the group? Uh, just the high school. That's a good school, that's good, you mean, you got some special names in school?
Um, not, not so good, it was not capitalized the C in his name either.
No.
Yeah. So, I have something. Uh, line two thirty-four. Um, I, I don't think Mark capitalizes the C in his name.
Comes from.
Very tiny, it's minor, minor.
Awful, man.
There'll be a couple of plonies in there.
Okay.
He has the box there.
Nice.
Oh, too much.
You know. Um. Nothing else to do?
Yeah, I was.
Well.
Okay, better than it was. Call my, call my golfer, he has a surgeon, I said, gee, John, I'm gonna crack some ribs. He said, can you go sit up? I said, oh, yeah, you crack some ribs. I have a, I have a poor communication between my mind and my body. And my mind hasn't figured out how old I am.
I've stopped.
You've stopped.
I'd have to review.
Just a minute, I'll be around the windows up there.
Several years of topics.
Are you in the, in the second, three days, two does?
She spoke, I think, and still waiting, that's correct, that kind of was personal. Really more time?
No.
I have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Meetings are accepted. Um, hello, Harry?
Okay, there are no public hearings scheduled for today, so we belong to new business. Conceptual consultation for lot line adjustment, lot one oh four eighteen, forty-nine Snow's Mountain Road, is somebody here?
Yeah, that's me. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Eric Posposell, and I work for Horizon's Engineering, and I am here to represent Rick and Ellen Kylie. And what, um, they have had a couple lots, those two lots, eighteen and nineteen on Snow's Mountain Road, they've been in the family for a number of years. And what they're proposing to do is a lot line adjustment. At one point, um, the family had a spare driveway and, um, there was a, are you folks familiar with the house of the Kylie, the McGoldrick family? Okay. Um, so I've only been working with Rick and Ellen and, um, there's, you know, the, the house that was the parents', um, they're no longer available to be in the house. The father passed away, mom, I think, is, you know, elderly as well. They want to separate the driveway, do a lot line adjustment, uh, to, to improve the lot configuration based on the construction that was done on the property. And then, um, sell the property, sell the lot.
Which, which one is the winner's?
So, let me show you, I just wanna give you that, well, I'll give you the whole deal. So, I, I brought two sets of plans, and one's a conceptual plan, what we're gonna do. But I also brought a site plan that the Kylis asked us to do, um, 'cause they've been working with Dana White, uh, to, um, do some of the construction improvements on the property. So, this will probably help you get a better understanding, and I can explain what's happening there. Um, so, again, you can see that there's, here's a couple more, here I go. Oh, everybody, oh, yeah.
All right.
Playing paper. Um, actually, this is, that's all I brought of the site plan.
All right, that's fine.
So, the driveways were connected, there, there was actually one driveway here, um, and a family, the, uh, you know, the family houses, um, and a deck and pavement were connected so that there was, you know, interconnectivity between the buildings, um, something that the McGoldricks did when they built the, to build the structure. Um, since then, their goal is, um, to, uh, separate the driveways, remove, if you look at, there's hatched pavement there. That, that hatched pavement, that's all stuff that's being demolished, some of it's already actually been done. So, this large deck that you see is already removed. Um, I actually brought a photo, 'cause at the time, see, that's, that's, that's the building now. So, that's this side of the house, it's gone, that deck's been taken off of there, just so you know, see, this deck right here, that was, that's this right here, it's gone. So, obviously, the deck is, was in the building setback, so, and even a portion of the home, tiny, tiny corner of the house. Um, and it's pretty, that, we're talking like inches right there, that, that, that tiny corner of the house encroaches in the setback. Now, that setback line is the current setback per the, um, configuration.
Excuse me, is this two lots now, or is it?
Yeah, it's two lots.
Is it eighteen and nineteen, give us show eighteen and eighteen?
Uh, yeah, here, that's a, that's a, that's the site plan. Here's the, yeah, so let me show you, this is, this is the concept plan that I'd like to present to you next month. And, yeah, and, yeah, this, this, so this is the, that's, that's what it's gonna look like, that's what we'd like to propose to do. I think I got, I don't have a brain act.
So, so the first is, is, this, this drawing is, is an as-is, this, these are the lot lines today?
Yeah. Um, no, let me share with you.
First off, where this is lot eighteen, is that supposed to be nineteen?
Yes, that's a typo on the site plan.
Okay.
This is a conceptual plan. So, um, yeah, I, obviously, this, this plan that I'm gonna present later, it's, you know, it's still a work in progress, like I said, it's a concept. Not for sure, I had a couple more of those. Um, this dash line is the existing property line.
Gotcha.
So, if you don't mind me just share this, because this is, this, um, this dash line is the existing property line. Okay? And the existing property line, which is over here, it would be like right through here, see this pin right here?
Mm-hmm.
And this, and, uh, and this pin right here, this concrete post, it goes kinda like that, that's the existing property line today, okay? So, um, that, that existing property line runs right up the middle of the driveway.
So, today, these are two lots.
Correct.
Owned by the same person.
They, um.
Or the same family.
The same family, correct.
That's right, okay, gotcha, all right.
McGoldrick Kylie.
So, it was not one lot, right.
McGoldrick Kylie.
Yeah.
McGoldrick Kylie.
Yeah.
Yep. So, again, um, so, like I said, the property line runs right up the middle of the paved driveway. The site plan shows that pavement is gonna be cut, that, this is all pavement that's being removed. Right now, that driveway's about eighteen feet wide, it's much wider than it needs to be. They're gonna cut that down to fourteen feet, take four feet off the edge of this pavement, remove all this, like I just showed you in the photograph, all this is going away. This is gonna be the new entrance for this house lot, this is the new entrance for that house lot, and the lot line is gonna move so that there's no pavement encroachment. You see, thi- this line actually shows what the pavement's gonna look like after we're done. See right now, the line goes up this driveway, they, we're gonna swing it out over here and then defend it back so that we clear the driveway pavement. See, there's no pavement, there's no encroachments, and, um, yeah, the lots will be separated.
And this is the proposed.
So.
The, uh.
The reason you're not shifting the line so that the setback is correct is because of the paved driveway, is that right?
Yeah, there's no, I mean, that's all the room, we, there's no way that you can do that. And if, if we try to, what, you're talking about with this deck?
Well, this, this line exists now with the improper setback, the way it is.
Yes.
But because you're moving this line, the question is, do you now have to get the right setback? And I'm wondering what would be the reason you couldn't, because you've got some room here that.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, the access to that house wouldn't happen. You'd still, see, the idea is to, is to remove the encroachment of, uh, the property line being on.
On the asphalt.
On the asphalt. And there's no, there's, as it is, we're reducing the size of the driveway. So, w- we've reduced the size of the driveway to a reasonable fourteen feet. Um, that's not that wide, you know, that just gives you an angle of. Uh, yeah, it's fourteen feet all the way through, it's fourteen foot wide all the way through, um.
Except the light, is that what you, it's not paving right in here, is that correct?
Yeah, over in there, yeah, but that's, there's a garage right there, you gotta be able to pull into the garage, it's a two-car garage right here. And, and the reason it's configured the way it is is this, this lot gets plowed and pushed back into here, this is a two-car garage. They've gotta be able to get in, back out, head out, that's been the configuration all along.
Mm-hmm. Which, which way is the, they back out, this way you say?
Yeah, they pull in this, yeah, they come in here and then they back around like this, see this little, they back around and then go out.
Now, when, I assume that the lot sizes stay exactly the same.
Exactly the same.
Right.
So, that's a, that's an important, yeah, that's.
So, they stay exactly the same as they were in the past?
Correct, that's exactly right.
I don't, what is the, what is the zoning here?
It's L D R.
L D R, yeah.
L D R, so.
That's a residential is my room.
We had a, basically, the lots to the right, and I'm asking a question, appears to be, have been a non-conforming lot.
Apparently.
Point four six acres, that way forever.
Correct.
Yeah, basically stays that way.
Yeah, so, here's, here's what I brought to just to show you. This lot right here, this is the original subdivision plan of this property, it's, uh, nineteen seventy-four, seventy-three. So, that lot was created in nineteen seventy-three.
Right.
And if you look, it says point zero five acres.
Point five zero acres, so they did, they did the calculation wrong.
Plus, but, plus, plus or minus, no, it's plus or minus.
Oh, plus or minus?
They did that on all those lots.
Right.
They, that's right.
So, it's a half an acre, plus or minus, so.
It's roughly a half acre.
And, and we thought, when, when the subdivision was done, all the tax maps were hand-drawn. And if you look at the old tax maps before we computerized it, it showed the, the houses on the proper lot in the proper locations. But when we did the, when we actually went to the deed and did the computerized lots, that's when we found.
Right.
Houses over lines and too close to setbacks and things like that, so.
Yeah. If you look at your tax map over there on the wall, it actually shows those buildings where they are and under the current configuration prior to the deck being removed.
Right.
And that deck is significantly over the setback.
Over the back.
Now, the dot.
So, that deck has been removed.
The dotted line that's showing here, the setback envelope, is based on the new, the proposed new lot.
Is the setback. Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
So, that's what we're showing you, is that that is still, there's, at, at this, so, this is, this is what it would look like without, with the deck, the original deck there. That's how it looks, it looked until a couple weeks ago when they removed that deck.
But the, but, but is it fair to say, I'm roughly looking at this, the corner of the building as it now exists didn't conform to the old setback?
Correct.
Even if you went to the correct, the old lot lines, it, it basically was in violation of the setback.
It nicked it, it just, it just nicked it.
It just nicked it, right.
Yep. It just nicked it. If you look at this original lot line, it was actually, you don't see this very often, but that lot line that divides them right here is a curve. Why there was ever a curve there unless, all I, I, historically, there probably, it followed an existing driveway, 'cause there was other buildings there at one time. So, that, if you notice, see this, this math right here, that's a curve. So, the, the original lot line divided the two lots was a curve as a builder. I don't know any builders that can lay out a house up against the property line and whenever they built the houses there, and know exactly where a point is along a curve. I mean, I've got the technology with my electronic equipment, but, um, I would be really scratching my head and banging away at a calculator to try and figure that one out. So, that's why I think you see that the building corner is really close, but, no cigar, just nicks it, so it's a little tiny bit over.
I just.
And the deck has been removed.
Correct, I have, yeah, I got one photograph, that, that deck.
That, that deck that's showing here, that's, oh, considerably older, because it's.
Yeah. Let me show you.
But you, but that's gone anyway.
Um, actually, you have it under here, sorry.
Yeah.
So, the, yeah, I'll bring more plans next time. The, um, that's, that's, that's the old deck, that's the section that's gone.
Oh, there's the old. That's the section that's gone.
You see, they had a, and this huge deck and this paved walkway that connected the houses.
Right.
That was all within that setback and encroaching, and that's what got removed, all this. So, this is all gone, they tried to remove as much as possible, um, but, you know, to conform to this lot line right here and chop that deck to meet the setback would be, it, it would just not work. Um, they tried to do, you know, they tried to do the best that they could within what they had, uh, to try and create a more conforming situation, but, yeah, I think, you know, it looks good, um. But I, as I said.
And, and Mark, I'm presuming at the point in time that someone built this house, they submitted a, they, they got a building permit, an application, or was this before we had building permits?
Back in the late seventies, we probably, if they did get a permit, we don't have it on file anymore.
Right, so we, we don't, we, we're not even sure if we were permitted.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is, this hatched area is all stuff that's being removed, originally, there was one driveway.
Okay.
Now, they're gonna separate this, this is all being saw cut and removed, this is, this is gonna, and this solid hatched area is a new driveway configuration, so, um. So, there, there's, there's gonna be two separate driveways here. Um, we've already submitted an application for driveway permit and it's been approved. So, um, the town road agent's been up and accepted it and looked at it and reviewed it and, um, has approved it, so.
The star shaded area at the end where the turnaround is, is new, is that correct?
Correct, right. And you'll see, because, like, exactly, he's talking about this area here, that's what they're proposing new, because before, they had a little bit extra pavement, they had more room to turn around. Um, 'cause they could, you could actually back in here a little bit more, you know, there's this, 'cause this is pavement, that's gone, so. And, and it's narrower, so they needed a little more turning radius in place to get around.
I understand the, uh, the reason why they're doing this, but I'm just a little concerned about taking a non-conforming lot, altering that lot into another non-conforming lot.
Well, I think the situation here is that they're trying to create the best-case scenario that they can, given what they, what they've inherited. So, they're trying to do the best they can, and we've looked closely at how to try and reconfigure the driveway based on the, on the garage, and there's a certain safety requirement, and even just ability to turn around. I mean, you still gotta get an oil truck in there and, you know, delivery vehicles and a car and to turn around. So, that's, that's what we've tried to do, reduce as much pavement as possible while still create, you know, not totally eliminating access. Um, you know, this is the entrance to the house, and, you know, the porch is in, the main entrance to the house is right here and the garage, so, I mean, we're kinda really limited to what we can do here, so.
I don't recall what the situation is with decks. I don't recall what the situation is with decks, can decks go into a...
It's one of those murky areas, because if it's attached to the building, then you question if it's, is it part of the building or not? I mean, I, I, you know, it's, it's another one of these gray areas. The, the reality is whoever interpreted, to me, I look at this, whoever created this situation, these are two separate lots, had been forever.
Right.
I mean, there's nothing to restrict them from selling one of these lots today as it's configured, right?
Well, the lot was, was approved, but the house wasn't approved, it's a residence, so there would be no reason to...
Well, it's like, isn't that by definition? We, it's built, we approved this, we gave an occupancy, I mean, they, they've got an occupancy, but it's approved.
Well, I was just wondering, the only reason I'm saying that is because...
I don't know.
It, it, it wouldn't take too much movement of that line to get the house within the, the limits, and, and the only issue being the deck.
Well, but again, then, as you, yeah, that's right, and so, what are we gonna, I mean, we're gonna, the thing is, is that the more I move it this way, the more it encroaches on that pavement.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, it doesn't, it won't foot ourselves, so...
But you, you know what, there's, there's, what we've tried to create there is, is a little bit more room, you gotta have just a little room off the edge of somebody's pavement, you know? I mean, you can't just, there's maintenance to do there, there's actually, you know, drainage swale to consider, you know, or drainage off the edge of the pavement, so to, to move that line any further over and to still make the turning radius, because you also have to consider that when we looked at this design, we have to figure out how a car can actually get turned around, turning radius, and that is, so we use this template, an auto turn template, that based on a certain length of vehicle, it has to be able to back out and make a turn and go headed in the other direction, and that is as small as we could make it. So we tightened it up as tight as we could, and, you know, that was, that was the best we could do from an engineering standpoint.
I can see that being the case if that was a wall at the, the property line, but, you know, perhaps it's a little bit illegally there.
Well, no, because you're saying, you're saying you gotta move it this way, though.
Right.
Right, so then the car, so then the car, what we're saying is that the car, if, if you extend this pavement anymore, the car and the back wheels and the vehicle will be then, if you move it this way, you're gonna be backing over on somebody's property. So you'll have to back the wheels off the pavement, into the grass, into the shoulder, over the, somebody else's property line, and you still end up with the same, basically you're crossing, you know, you're on somebody else's land, turning your vehicle on a regular basis, so that's why we configured it the way we did.
This, the plan I'm looking at right here, it shows the setback lines, but it doesn't seem to show setback lines with respect to the proposed property line, is that...
No, it, not on this one. I just, I believe that, again, that's the site plan. That was a site plan that we put together, this site plan was for Dana and the contractor, so he could, he needed to get prices to contractors. It's not a requirement to have, typically to have a site plan to review. I brought this along so that he could see what the, what we were proposed, proposed to do. So, yeah, that, yeah, that, this cleaner sheet here, which I'm in short supply of...
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the one, this is, this is the, the start of my concept plan, so if I'm presenting a lot line adjustment, I'll put some general notes and, you know, the locust map and so forth, and the deed references, but this will not change. This is what we want, this is what their, the end result is right here. And again, what we tried to do, because they were, we started out with a non-conforming lot to begin with, based on this plan of record, those pins, the iron pins and the monuments I found matched to within inches of this nineteen seventy-three plan. So the lot mathematically has always been that same size since those stone bounds and iron pins were set in the seventies. So it never made it to a full half an acre, is what I'm saying, it was always point five plus or minus, right from day one. So what I did was I just balanced the area to create exactly, that's the, the exact same square footage, right to the, right to the foot, the exact, all I did was took the exact same amount of property and balanced it so that, I did nothing to change the area, it's
I think, to me, it looks like a sensible thing to do. The only problem I have is creating another non-conforming lot, just because it was non-conforming to begin with, doesn't necessarily open the door to a non-conforming lot later.
Non-conforming in which way?
The, the setback requirement.
Well, okay, well, like, I mean, we, I, I, again, we're gonna still be, we're gonna, there's gonna be an encroachment on the property, no matter what, if, if you do that, you're gonna have an encroachment.
Where's...
I mean, you're gonna have an, you're gonna have...
Because of the turning radius coming out of the garage.
Correct, because of the turning radius coming out of the garage.
So, Terry, I'm reading the zone, you know, relative to grand father, and it, it, again, it really doesn't say anything in terms of guidance, yeah, let me see if I can find the applicable thing, the, the only thing I can come up with, this is in the preamble. It says, "Whenever any existing use of structure is not in conformity with the provisions of this ordinance, it may continue to exist subject to the provisions of Article ten nine." Now, there are no provisions in Article nine, so basically, it says it can continue to exist.
Which is fine.
In other words, you got no guidance.
Right, exactly.
Zero guidance.
I don't think, I don't, I don't have any problem with it existing, because it's been, and there it is.
No, well, yeah, it can, right.
But now it's being changed, and now it's not the same.
But we don't have a statement in here like we do in some areas, where we clearly state that if you change the structure of the building in any way, it now must conform. There's, we don't have any statement like that.
I guess the other, the other point to make is that it is two separate lots.
Yeah.
And I mean, we don't have to move the line at all, we can sell it the way it is and keep an encroachment, and there'll still be, there'll still be a violation of the setback. But like I said, they're just trying to create a situation where there, there's less encroachment than there currently exists, they're trying to improve the situation, they've removed the deck, they're trying to remove the pavement, they're trying to separate the two and create as clean a situation and as clean a break as they possibly can, and, and, I mean...
I don't disagree that it improves the situation.
Right.
I just don't know what the...
Yeah, and you really wanna be confused, I'm gonna read you the next sentence.
Okay.
Thank you.
It says, "No conforming use of structure shall become non-conforming or any non-conforming," this is ours, right? Any non-conforming use of structure become further non-conforming by any manner or action whatsoever, except in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance, which there don't seem to be any, or by any legal action of a, of a jurisdiction setting aside the provision of this ordinance.
Unfortunately, this, this case is less non-conforming.
So this is non-conforming and we're making it further non-conforming.
No, we're making it less non-conforming.
A little less non-conforming. I, I would interpret that to, to kinda say, you gotta live with it.
Although, actually, to be honest with you, it does make it further non-conforming, looking at this.
Typically, if it, if it's making it less non-conforming, you can approve it without a corner of the zoning board. If it's gonna make any, if it's gonna make it less conforming in any way, then it would need to go to the zoning board first for a waiver of the dimensions, equitable something like...
Equitable waiver.
Yeah, right.
Equitable waiver.
So, but if, but you don't need to do that if it's making it less non-conforming.
It actually makes it slightly...
Slightly less non-conforming.
Slightly work further non-conforming, just very slightly.
No, it depends, it depends on the definition, you see, the deck, see, we have this other thing, is the deck part of the building or not?
Not the way building is defined in your ordinance right now.
That's right.
So the deck does not count?
Not the way it's written right now.
Good.
A porch with a roof.
Well, that's good.
A porch with a roof, but not, but not an open door. But not a deck, right.
That needs to be changed, sorry.
Yeah, I made a note of that while you were talking.
But for our purposes right now.
For the purposes right now, the deck does not count.
Right.
If it's an open uncovered deck.
Plus or minus.
So when I do the math calculations, that's what never made it, it happened to be anywhere.
Sometimes you have to adjust it.
If you enter all the time, create all the angles.
That's what I did, I don't know, might be opinions, sometimes you don't, sometimes that could be from this point to this point, and then another, yeah, see, that one is from that year.
They left this little caveat on the end of that.
So that defines this line.
This was always over and this was always under.
Yeah, that's what he did. Right, he's, he's made a sort of, hasn't changed the script with the lot. Well, it's, it's probably close enough to, you could, you could say it doesn't make it more or less non-conforming, it's close enough.
Generally, it's in the direction of making the situation...
And if we tried to do something to, to make up for that, we'd be making the situation worse, is the only reason.
And we're making odd lots or little bump outs and sort of stuff.
Yeah, I think that the attempt that they've made to remove a substantial portion of that deck and the pavement certainly was a good attempt.
So they would have to submit an application for a minor lot line adjustment?
Exactly, yes. I, I think we could probably live with that adjustment. I mean, unless another board member has some comment on that, I don't see any sense of making guys like difficult.
So from a scheduling standpoint, we'd like to submit an application and be available next month to come back with the same set of plans.
My, my lot line adjustment, Mark, to see if you know, if I...
You wanna just a couple paper copies?
Um, yes, only one of the others. I believe he does, yes.
Yeah, I just... But he's only got one of the others, right? Well, no, I should be, I got a guy behind me.
I think for a minor lot, when just a public hearing is required.
I don't, I have no idea.
I don't believe it is.
I can't remember.
No, I don't remember what your regulations say, but you would need to notify abutters any name.
Right, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there is a clock then for, so how, do you have to get the application and how many, how far in advance?
For other folks that want to...
I think it's twenty-one days.
And again, the key thing...
Twenty-one clear days.
Emphasized to everyone, is it?
But we'll work with them.
The application for a minor lot line adjustment, you'd have to get it twenty-one days prior to the next meeting.
Correct, and then I heard that it doesn't require a public hearing, that we can pretty much just submit the application, notify the abutters?
I gotta, we gotta notify the abutters and I, I'll look through the subjective regs, but I don't think there's a requirement for, for a minor lot line.
This could be approved at the next hearing?
It could be.
But even if, but we, if we decide that we need to be a public hearing, we'll post it, right?
Yeah, we'll post it, right.
Yeah, okay.
There you go.
Okay, so twenty-one days, calendar days or working days?
I think it says clear days, so...
Does that make a difference?
Calendar days.
Okay, I'm gonna leave those here.
Not working days, calendar days.
Okay, right, so basically a week, you got a week to get your application.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I kinda thought, we can do that. Super, thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Okay, now enrolled is, we have Tyra Vanfor, Pliny Lot County Council, and she has suggested zoning ordinance changes. Had to come up with after a year of the...